Here we go. Ladies and gentlemen, I hereby call to order this meeting of the Sedalia City Council on the 17th day of November, part of the 2025-2026 session. The meeting is now called to order. The first item on our agenda is the legislative prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance. Chaplain Mattson, you have the floor.
Would you stand as able and join me tonight in our invocation? Dear Lord, Father of us all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the city council of Sedalia, mayor, administrator, board members, staff, meet to hear about, question, discuss, and make decisions for the betterment of our community and its citizens. We are grateful for their service and dedication to this city. We ask for protection of our first responders who were 24/7 to serve and protect us often at their own peril. And tonight particularly, we are thankful for Nathan Bellardo, who is getting his fire department badge pinning this evening, as he is on this great team that we have of our fire department, a special blessing there. We are grateful for the United States of America, this constitutional republic. So many thousands have fought and died to create and preserve this great republic for 250 years, and we ask your blessing and protection for all of those military and civilians serving our great country today, here and throughout the world, and ask that they be home, brought home safely. And as we leave tonight, we ask your protection for all of our loved ones, and especially now during this coming holiday of Thanksgiving, not only do we give thanks, but many of us will be on the road, many will be traveling, and so we ask a special protection to keep us all safe and free from harm, and that until we meet again. In this, we pray in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
States of America, and we are the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the good and evil, just as it is.
Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Ames.
Eric.
Scribner.
You.
August.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
All right, very good. Our next item is under special awards. We have a badge pinning for that. We'll go ahead and invite up Fire Chief Huron.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we are going to pin Nathan Bellardo. He has met all the requirements of the Sedalia Fire Department to wear the badge. It is a special evening. It is always nice to bring a gentleman from the darkness into the light and into the fire service. For those of you that don't know, Mr. Bellardo's father is a Missouri State Highway Patrolman, so we are glad to bring him over to the good side. Oh, there they are. I didn't know they came up yet. You guys are supposed to tell me when they're behind me. Mr. Bellardo is a great young individual. His smile is infectious, his ability and his want to learn is something to behold. It will serve him well in a career in the fire service. This afternoon, he was out in the engine bay singing while they were cleaning the trucks and doing other stuff, so he is a joy to have as an employee. He will serve the cities of Sedalia and the citizens of this city greatly. So, Mr. Bellardo, if you would please come up. Congratulations on earning your badge. Mr. Bellardo, go ahead. Just don't stab him. I pass out with blood.
All right, the next item on our agenda is a presentation. This is for the Sedalia Senior Center and Silver Hair Legislative Update. We'll go ahead and invite up Renee Vance to go ahead and give that. Renee, you have the floor.
Good evening. I'd like to be known tonight as the Pettis County Representative for the Care Connection Area Agency on Aging. The Care Connection is one of 10 area agencies on aging, or the MAs, that collectively cover all 114 counties and the city of St. Louis here in Missouri. For those of you who are new or unfamiliar with the silver-haired legislative process, it was established in 1973, right here in Missouri, giving us the distinction of being the first state in the nation to create this body. The purpose is to provide education and the tools for the successful legislative advocacy for our senior population. Since its pioneering start, the concept has been adopted by all 50 states, and it demonstrates its enduring value for over 50 years. The central focus of my attendance was the work session in Jeff City was to advocate for the needs of the Pettis County seniors. Each year, the silver-haired legislative body compiles a platform that is presented to the governor and the legislative body. Based on the comprehensive discussions and research from that session, I am presenting the five key priorities that represent the most pressing issues facing Missouri senior population this year. These are the areas that we will be concentrating our advocacy efforts. Priority number one, the personal needs allowance, or PNA. Our first and arguably most critical priority addresses the dignity and basic spending needs of our most valuable, vulnerable seniors, those in long-term facilities who rely on Medicaid. The ask is to increase that Medicaid personal needs allowance with an inflation rider. Currently, Missouri off PNA is $50. This stipend is the only money that resident is allowed for essential personal items, shoes, telephones, and hygiene areas. That amount is inadequate considering the inflation over the past decades, asking the legislators to increase to $70 with a cost of living adjustment. This simple mechanism would ensure that the PNA keeps pace with rising costs of goods and preserves the dignity of our seniors for years to come. Priority number two, increased funding for foot care. Addressing a commonly overlooked yet fundamental aspect of senior health care is foot care. The ask, we are trying to fund the base to enable a routine preventive foot care services for eligible seniors. Many low-income seniors, routine foot care trimming, cleaning, is considered non-covered services. Fixed incomes and limited mobility often cannot afford or physically perform those basic maintenance. Neglected foot care, especially those with circulatory issues or arthritis, can lead to painful infections, severe mobility impairment, falls, or even amputations. That's not just a comfort issue, it's a public health issue. This priority advocates for the state to provide dedicated funding for the essential preventive foot care services to ensure our seniors maintain their mobility, prevent severe medical complications, and ultimately reduce the much higher costs associated with advanced foot care and wound care. Priority number three, modifying eligibility for aged and disabled Medicare. Our third priority addresses a fundamental barrier to care for our older adults, extremely restrictive eligibility requirements. The ask, we want to modify and increase the eligibility criteria specifically for the income and asset limits for aged and disabled Medicare. Current limits are set at $1,109 per month, or 85% of the federal poverty level, for single seniors, and they disqualify a large number who are considered the working poor or have got a modest retirement income. These folks are often a few dollars over the limit, but their income cannot cover the cost of private insurance, in-home care, or facility care, often forced to rapidly spend down their life savings to qualify, which goes against the principle of rewarding personal planning and responsibility. This priority calls for legislative modification to raise the income and assets levels to a more realistic level, ensuring more seniors who need essential long-term services and support are able to qualify without having to impoverish themselves. We're asking them to raise it up to 100% of the federal poverty level, which is $15,650 a year. Priority number four, real property tax exemption for 100% disabled veterans. Our fourth priority is focused on providing full and deserving recognition for those who have sacrificed the most for our country. The ask, provide a full real estate property tax exemption for veterans with 100% VA-rated service-connected disability. Missouri currently offers a very limited property relief for these veterans, primarily through a small income-based property tax of up to $1,100. The only veterans receiving full exemptions are former prisoners of war, and they have 100% service-connected disability, but it does not cover Afghanistan, Iraq, Vietnam, if you are handicapped because of roadside bombs or anything else. The situation is highly restrictive, and often severely disabled veterans, fixed incomes struggle to meet daily needs, and they still have to pay full property tax. This priority advocates for constitutional and/or legislative amendment to grant a full exemption from real property taxes on the primary residence, for any vet certified by the veteran that has 100% service-connected disability. The benefit has already been extended in many other states. Priority number five is expanding the resident dwelling accessibility tax credit. This final priority is about empowering seniors to remain independent, which is almost always the preference of the senior and the most cost-effective for the state, aging in place. The ask, we would like to modify and significantly expand the funding and accessibility of the resident dwelling accessibility tax credit. Modification, installing grab bars, building ramps, widening doorways are often necessary in order to prevent costly falls and allow older Americans to stay safely in their homes rather than moving permanently into long-term facilities. Currently, the total credits available statewide is capped at $100,000 per year. That's for the entire state. It's a small pool that quickly gets exhausted. This priority advocates for increasing this fund on the credit and to simplify the eligibility process by making it easier for the seniors to modify their homes, we invest in their independence, reduce their health care costs, and improve the quality of life for our aging population. In summary, the work session in Jefferson City confirmed the urgent need for action across the several critical areas. These five priorities focused on dignity, which was our PNA, preventive health, foot care, access to care, the Medicaid eligibility, veteran recognition, tax exemption, and independent living, the accessibility credit, represent the essential steps we must take to support our senior population. The Care Connection and the silver-haired legislation have laid out a clear plan. Now I need your help to help achieve it. I urge every person here to use your influence and knowledge to support these goals and emphasize the importance of increased dignity and support for Missouri's aging representatives. Your voice is crucial to turning these priorities into law. Thank you again, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Does council have any question?
Would you mind sending us an email we could send our opinions to?
Oh, absolutely. Yes. Anybody else?
Anyone?
Quick update on the senior center. We have four this year. 107,000 was our funding goal. We have reached about 26,000. We have several fundraising events coming up in the next few months. Please support. Appreciate it. The next one is the...
Meeting's Thursday.
Well, that's board meeting. Yeah, we've got a mystery box, again, for Christmas. I'll have details and get flyers for you.
All right, very good. Thank you, Renee. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the previous session meeting minutes. These are from the council meeting that occurred on November 3, 2025. Do I have a motion and second? I have a motion and a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding those meeting minutes? Having heard none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now we have the report of our special boards, commissions, and committees. We have the acceptance of the Citizens Traffic Advisory Commission meeting minutes dated October 15, 2025. Do I have a motion and second?
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding those meeting minutes? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now we have our roll call of standing committees. Up first is Finance Administration. Chairwoman Bogus, you have the floor.
Thank you. Tonight, there's four items for consideration through the Finance Administration Committee. The first one being Oats Transit will provide their annual update to the city council, offering an overview of current services, ridership trends, and planned activities for the upcoming year.
Director Walkup, you have the floor.
Thank you. So, for those of you who don't know me, I see a lot of familiar faces, but I am Tracy Walkup. I have been the regional director down here for 18 years now. It's been a long, long ride. Sorry.
Thank you.
So, let's get started. As I figure out how to use the buttons again. So, we are a not-for-profit. We have been incorporated as a 503(c) not-for-profit since the '70s, since our inception. Our mission is to provide reliable transportation for transportation disadvantaged individuals in the state so that they can remain in their homes. So, our partnership began in 1988. The city ran its own service from 1981 to 1988, and it was passed to what was then an older adults transportation service in July of 1988. Oats Transit is now, since the '80s, a rural general public transportation provider, which means that we have shortened our name to Oats because we are no longer just for older adults. We serve everyone within the community as long as they have space on any established route. Exceptions to that, to keep us out of trouble, we are not allowed to compete with for-profit companies, so we get frequent phone calls for school bus transportation, and we absolutely cannot do school transportation because the school systems have for-profit companies that offer that service. Also, I frequently get requests for city, county, and state fairs outside our operating hours. We do serve the Sedalia State Fair during the hours that we are actually scheduled to run. We can't deviate from those hours, or we're seen to be competing with taxi services and other shuttles. So, we are and have been for many, many years, part of your local community. We've participated financially in the depot renovation, and we've been in there since 2009. We are currently making payments to the city for the use of the building and the adjoining building under a 20-year lease, and I do want to at some point readdress with Public Works opening up the doorway that goes between those two sections so that we have full usability of the additional section. The bus that goes in a circle around town celebrated its 26th birthday this year. We provide Pettis County Community Partnership with approximately 800 to 1,000 $5 punch cards every year for them to pass out to low-income individuals so that they can ride the bus for free. We also provide a significant amount of local employment. I currently have 17 local drivers and 13 local office staff. That sounds kind of office-staff-heavy, 17 drivers and 13 staff, but we do cover more than just Pettis County. We cover 13 counties, so... Our average hourly rate right now is $18.70 an hour plus benefits. We are currently hiring non-CDL drivers and entry-level office workers at 1701 and CDL drivers at 1801 per hour. I looked it up. I ran a report this morning. Payroll for the past fiscal year for the local hourly staff here was $725,260.25. And I just want to put this out there. We currently have an office opening, which we very, very, very rarely have. We are losing our only fluent Spanish speaker at the end of the month, and so we will give preference to anyone who speaks fluent Spanish. Our funding, we do a lot of contracted transportation, and that's used to match our federal funding. This goes through private companies, MTM, Department of Mental Health, for workshops and activity centers, and Care Connection, the AAA that serves here. We have been partners with the AA's in this state since the inception. We use federal funding, which makes up a significant amount of our funding for this area. There is state funding. We have passenger fares, which we have not raised for about 10 years. It's $2.50 if you want the door-to-door service and $1.50 if you want to ride the bus. The city of Sedalia provides us with $25,000 annual operating subsidy. And what does this mean for the local economy? Well, using the very specific Missouri transit multiplier of $1.97, local payroll alone adds over $1,428,000 to the local economy. That does not include anything else that we do here in town, and we do a lot of business with a lot of local companies. The future, service availability. Sedalia stands out as a rural community having six days of service. We run Monday through Friday, 4 to 6, and we run on Saturday from 8 to 4. And we have some new policies that we have rolled out July the 1st, and I want to take this opportunity to make sure everybody knows about them. We are now accepting next-day reservations until 4:00 p.m. We used to cut off at 2, but we're going until 4:00. And we are offering the opportunity for same-day trips between the hours of 8:30 and 2:30. And those hours are very specific because we are very busy doing dialysis and workshop transportation up until about 8 o'clock in the morning, and then again at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So if you call in between 8:30 and 2:30 for same-day trips, we may very well be able to fit you in. Vehicles and vehicle parts, there are still supply chain issues with vehicles and replacement parts, and our buses, since pre-COVID, have doubled in price. The total Midwest region fleet is currently, as of today, 106 vehicles. This includes buses, transit vans, minivans, and sedans. As of 7/1/2025, my fleet had 17,406,11 miles on it. Four of the buses, four of those 106 buses are out of service. Those of you who know Rick Askin, if you drive by his lot, it's the Oats Bone Lot. So, we have four buses at Rick's Bone Lot that we are stripping parts off of to save us, you know, time and money. You can't get the parts, or they're really expensive now. So, Rick has saved us a lot of money over the past few years by taking parts off of the old buses. So, 51 of the vehicles that are in my fleet are past their useful life. That's fully one-half of my vehicles in my fleet are past their useful life. We went through an issue just before and then during COVID, and still to this day, where it's hard to get your hands on buses. You know, we are doing the best we can, and we're expecting some more to come in, hopefully before the end of the year, but half my fleet needs to be replaced at this point. And funding uncertainties, they are always, always an ongoing concern. Oops, I went the wrong way, sorry. So, I want to do some fun stuff tonight. We have a space over there that, since we've moved into that building, has not grown a blade of grass. They put a roll of sod on it when they were doing the construction, and it has just been bare dirt ever since. So, Patty Spry, who works in my office, and I decided that this year, we were going to put in a garden. And I want to give a shout out to Baker Creek Heritage Seeds down by Marshfield, Missouri. They have a program where not-for-profits that are providing food to shelters or other places can get free seeds, and I was shocked at the amount of seeds they sent us. We're good for the next 10 years. So, anyway, this is just a sampling. I counted them up, and we had 25 different pictures of things that we took over to the community cafe between July the 7th and October the 21st. We also planted lots of flowers for the pollinators. We are also doing something that I would like to ask the council for. I thought that the railroad, after my 10 years of griping at them, had come in and done something with their lot this year, but I've been told that the staff is pretty sure it was the city that came in and sprayed weed killer all over. I would appreciate it if the city didn't spray it next year. If it's the city doing it, I would ask that they come in first thing in the spring and mow it, and then let us keep throwing flower seeds out there because we are creating a really great pollinator patch on the railroad property that was not being maintained. This is just the start. Lastly, I almost took these pictures out and then I just couldn't. This is Oats Transit at the state fair here in Sedalia in 1973. We have our board members up there with Miss Missouri, and then we have our drivers, and all their buses lined up behind them at the fairgrounds. So, I would like to ask that the council this year, when you go into your budget negotiations, look at increasing what you're giving to Oats. I haven't asked for an increase since 2016. We are currently at $25,000. When we first took over the service from the city of Sedalia in 1988, the city was paying $44,000 for the service at that time. So, it's been a bargain, and I would ask that the city council look at raising that for the next fiscal year. And that's all I have, unless there are questions for me.
Counsel, have any questions? Ms. Walkup?
Thank you for having me again.
Thank you, Tracy.
I'll see you next year.
Thank you.
Now we'll have a representative from Baker Tilly.
City Mayor, Member of City Council. I'm Tom Calico with Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors. I lead the Kansas City Office. I'm here today subbing for Ben Hart. Ben is on a much-deserved vacation, so I'm glad to be here for him. Jessica Alphon, who also, I think, works with you all, is coming back from Scottsdale, Arizona, where she ran her first marathon. Arizona, where she ran her first marathon successfully. So glad that I could sub for them and allow them to pursue their other interests. So for some of you who don't know, I have worked with Sedalia for probably about a decade. Prior to Ben and Jessica taking over things, I've worked on a number of bond transactions for you all and economic development projects for you all. So it's good to be back here with you again this evening. But I'm here to report on the sale of your 2025 certificates of participation. These are 20-year certificates. They ended up in the amount of $15,325,000. You may wonder, certificate of participation versus bonds, what's the difference? A certificate of participation is essentially a form of a lease purchase. Instead of getting a bond, the holder gets what's called a certificate. It differs from a bond in that it has an annual appropriation backing, which means you can expect with your budget each year to get a request to pay the lease payment for the certificates of participation. So a little bit different, but in form, works pretty much the same way as a bond issue. The proceeds of the certificates are going to be used to finance the construction of a bowling alley, a fire training facility, and replacement of the central fire station. The bowling alley, as I'm sure you know, was also partially funded by a donation. Also, proceeds of the certificates are going to be used to design the outdoor aquatic center for construction at a later date. You received a premium bid on the certificates from the purchasers, so that allowed us to reduce the amount from the planned $15,755,000 to that final amount of $15,325,000. So the way we issue these certificates, they're very common in the state of Missouri, and as your municipal advisor, our goal is always to get you the most competition that you possibly can get when you issue debt. And so we were able to issue this through a competitive bid. So similar to other things that the city might do, purchase vehicles, what have you, you know, we took advantage of competition. We sent out your official statement, which is essentially the prospectus for the certificates. We sent that out to the entire universe of banks out there, and then on a given date and time, in this case, November 3rd, we took bids, and we received two bids representing 29 banks. So two bids versus 29. Why? Oftentimes, banks will bid in what's called a syndicate, and in this particular case, the winning bidder, Robert W. Baird, bid with a group of 28 banks. So two bids, but 29 banks, which is good participation. Baird's winning bid was a true interest cost of 3.99% and change. That was good news. We had estimated prior to the issuance a rate of 4.38%, so it came in a little better than what we expected. Always happy to see that. We feel like the bids were competitive based on similar sales that we've seen around Missouri and market indices. You had previously given certain parameters by which the sale could be approved, the amount of bonds, the interest rate and such. The bid met those parameters, so the certificates were actually awarded, and thus my report to you this evening. As we normally do with your debt obligations, we pursued a credit rating through S&amp;P. S&amp;P gave a rating of A+ to the certificates and affirmed that same A+ rating on all of the city's outstanding annual appropriation certificate of participation obligations. They also affirmed your AA- rating on general obligation and on general obligation bonds. You know, it's noted that this was an accomplishment. Holding the rating was an accomplishment. You face some budget challenges of late, and being able to hold your rating in the face of those budget challenges is certainly noteworthy. S&amp;P noted in their report certain strengths of the city that I'd like to highlight for you. They highlighted your exceptional management team, your robust financial policies and forecasts, and your high level of reserves. So those were strengths of your rating. So overall, I'd like to congratulate you on successful financing. It's no small undertaking. I should also recognize the excellent work of your city staff as well as your bond counsel, Girmar and Bell, who do fine work for you. On a personal note, if you'll give me just a moment for a personal note, as I said, I've worked with you for a number of years. I am retiring next year at the end of May. I will be retiring. Ben Hart will take over leadership of the office, so I just thought I'd take advantage of the opportunity to actually be standing here before you this evening to thank you for the, you know, the long affiliation I've had with Sedalia, and I've let you know how much I've enjoyed it. So thank you.
Very good.
Have a good evening.
The council have any questions for the representative from Baker Tilly?
I have one. You mentioned strengths. Were there any weaknesses noted?
You know, probably the main one, and really, you share this with so many communities, is the local economy. Your local economy. You know, you have a limited economy as a rural center. You have a limited economy. You don't have some of the same advantages that cities have in major metropolitan areas where they can leverage, you know, the larger economy. So you are somewhat limited. Your incomes tend to be a little bit lower, but you know, this puts you in the same boat as most cities across the United States. So it's, but it is somewhat of a drag on your rating. And you know, it's just one, you have limited control of it. You've done some great things in terms of bringing new employers in and new businesses, and you've got housing development going, so you're making great strides, but you know, it is something that's just limited control.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And then our next presentation will be from our revenue collection trends with Ms. Jessica.
We're looking at the second chart of numbers, and the net sales and use tax, these are on September sales at the stores, is up fiscal year-to-date by about $179,000 or 1.4%. We had budgeted a 4% increase, so we are off-budget by around $340,000-some. The marijuana tax, that's an additional 3% sales tax that started at cash registers in October of 2023. This is the first fiscal year we have a full year-over-year comparison, and so far fiscal year-to-date marijuana tax is higher by $33,000. The franchise tax is lower fiscal year-to-date, and that is due primarily to the electric tax, which is around $405,000 lower fiscal year-to-date. The transportation taxes is higher fiscal year-to-date, and that is due to higher gasoline tax, which is up 11.3%. Vehicle sales are also higher by 2.2%, and then vehicle fees are lower 1.8%. And then finally, personal property tax payments, those are less fiscal year-to-date, but the majority of those payments come in December and January, so we'll have a better idea where that will end the year there.
Does council have any questions for Director Powell? All right, thank you, Director Powell.
Thank you. And our final item tonight, we have three ordinances for consideration in reference to business license fees. First one being the administration and finance have completed a detailed review of the city's occupational and business license structure and identified several opportunities to simplify categories, eliminate inconsistencies, and reduce costs for Sedalia businesses. While state law limits our ability to fully restrict certain classifications, staff focused on areas where improvements could be made without affecting those compliances. The next consider ordinance to consider would be a staff has prepared an ordinance for council consideration that formally establishes when political subdivisions, such as the United States, state of Missouri, Pettis County, local school district, and other governmental agencies, may receive waivers of city permit and inspection fees. Under this ordinance, eligibility and titles will remain fully subject to all permitting and inspecting requirements. And then our third one will be in response to a feedback from local businesses regarding delays in obtaining a no-tax-do certificate from the Missouri Department of Revenue. Staff has prepared an ordinance establishing a provisional business license option, and the ordinance allows an applicant who has submitted a complete application and paid all required fees but is still awaiting final state documentation to operate for up to 90 days, with a possible extension of up to 60 days for good cause.
Okay, so we have three ordinances on the table here. We'll go ahead and call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-187.
Bill Number 2025-187. An ordinance demanding the fee schedule of cities Sedalia related to annual business licenses.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and second for a second reading of Bill Number 2025-187. Do you have any council discussion regarding that bill? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-187. An ordinance demanding the fee schedule of the city of Sedalia related to annual business licenses.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and second for final passage of Bill Number 2025-187. Do you have any council discussion regarding that bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All in favor?
I will now call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-188.
Bill Number 2025-188. An ordinance demanding the code of ordinances of the cities today in Missouri relating to fee exemptions for governmental and school projects.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion and second for the second reading of Bill Number 2025-188. Do you have any council discussion regarding that bill that is on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-188. An ordinance demanding the code of ordinances of the cities today in Missouri relating to fee exemptions for governmental and school projects. Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and second for final passage of Bill Number 2025-188. Do you have any council discussion regarding the final passage of this bill? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All in favor?
I will now call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-189.
Bill Number 2025-189. An ordinance demanding the code of ordinances of the cities today in Missouri establishing a provisional business license status.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion and second for the second reading of Bill Number 2025-189. Do you have any council discussion regarding that bill? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-189. An ordinance demanding the code of ordinances of the cities today in Missouri establishing a provisional business license status. Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and second for final passage of Bill Number 2025-189. Do you have any council discussion regarding that bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
All in favor?
Bill passes, and thank you, Chairman Boggs.
Thank you.
Up next, we have public safety. Chairman Scribner, you have the floor.
Thank you. There are two items for consideration through public safety. The first one is Animal Service Manager Randy Batson will provide a strategic budget planning presentation to the city council. The annual presentation highlights the department's vision and priorities for the upcoming year.
Good evening. I'm Randy Batson, and I'm here to talk to you about my strategic plan for the animal shelter for next year. This first slide is about our staff. We have two full-time shelter attendants, Tyler Maury and Amy Close. We have an animal control officer, Troy Schneider. We have a part-time animal control officer, part-time shelter attendant, who will be starting December 8th, I believe. So we just recently filled that position. And our veterinarian, which is new this year, Dr. Jamie Case, and our veterinary technician in training, Sarah Proctor. Animal control is open six days a week, and we are available at all times for emergencies, but they are out in the community on patrolling for stray animals from 1:00 to 5:00. I'm sorry, I can barely talk tonight. Our hours of operation are noon to 5:00, Monday through Saturday, but we are there every single day of the year. The animals have to be fed every day, so we are there every day, every holiday, no matter As far as our facilities go, we have several different sections. We have the canine section, where we have 49 dog kennels, six in quarantine, 10 in holding, six in indoor/outdoor, and 27 in adoption. We've also added the wiggle room in the last several years, which is an outdoor play area consisting of three pens. There's some dog houses, some fountains, fire hydrants, and play activities for the dogs. On the cat side, there are 68 cat kennels total. We have 28 in quarantine, 28 in holding, and 12 in adoption. And then we have recently added the wagon tails trail. In the last several years, we've added on to that a little bit each year, and it's a walking trail that is available for the community to use, as well as volunteers for our shelter pets. And then this past year, we've added the spay and neuter clinic, which we utilized a room already in the shelter. And in that room, we have two surgical tables, two prep tables, an exam table, recovery kennels, an anesthesia machine, and programmable autoclave, which is a nice machine that we use to sterilize all of the utensils that we use to spay and neuter the pets. Each year, I show you guys the statistics between the previous year and the current year. As you can see, our adoptions have gone up from 2024 to 25. Are transferred out. That just means that we found a different place where this animal would be more easily adopted, meaning we've transferred it to a different rescue or shelter where it had a better chance of getting adopted more quickly. Return to owners have gone down quite a bit from 24 to 25, so there are fewer people out there that are coming to retrieve their pets when they've gone missing. The euthanasia rate has stayed about the same, and our live release rate is still pretty much the same, 94% last year and 93% this year. Anything that is 90% or above qualifies as a no-kill shelter year for us. So we've met that standard every year since I've come here. Last year, I came to council and proposed several goals. One was to ensure that the community had access to low-cost spay and neuter services. The big reason for that is that we, our community, has a low-cost spay and neuter clinic. We are lucky to have that clinic. That clinic stays extremely busy because it's one of the only ones in our area. So people are driving to that clinic from Kansas, from Kansas City, from South Missouri, and that clinic stays booked nonstop. So our citizens were having a hard time getting in. We and other rescues were having a hard time getting in. Our animals were sitting in the shelter for weeks, if not over a month, without being able to be moved up for adoption because they hadn't been spayed or neutered yet. So I asked council to approve a spay and neuter project in our shelter by hiring a veterinarian, spaying and neutering our own animals, as well as offering the opportunity to other rescues and shelters in our community so that we could all get our animals adopted more quickly. Council approved that. I have not seen any posts on the local spay and neuter clinics page stating that they're, they were posting frequently that you couldn't get an appointment for at least 30 days, and then if you didn't hear back from them, to please keep calling. You don't see them making those posts anymore. So people are, I believe, able to get into that clinic. I don't hear those complaints from our community anymore. When we talk to people in the community and ask them, have you thought about getting your dog spayed and neutered? They've said, yes, we've already got an appointment, instead of, well, we tried, but we couldn't get an appointment. So our animals are moving through the process a lot quicker also, and that showed in our adoption rates from last year to this year. Another goal that we had was to repair the kennel walls. That goal has not been completed yet, but it is started. Public Works is currently in the shelter, and they are sandblasting the old coverings off the walls so that we can put a more successful coating on and meet those state standards. And the third goal- On top of that, we were having the animal control officer drive the animal control vehicle to and from, delivering the animals and dropping it off. That was three hours per day, two to three days a week, that we did not have animal control inside city limits and ready to address anything that needed attended to. So with that also goes wear and tear on the vehicle, extra oil changes, extra tires, et cetera. Some highlights from this past year. Our ACO Officer Schneider was elected to Missouri Animal Control Board for a third term. We hosted the Missouri Animal Control Association mini-conference and training here in Sedalia at the PD. All staff became certified kennel technicians by going through a training program. We improved the animal ordinances, and we changed fines to encourage better pet ownership. We created a surgical room within the shelter and began providing surgeries to outside shelters and rescues. And we took in three hoarding situations, including 25 dogs in 24 hours that all had mange, and have successfully rehomed every one of those dogs. So goals for 2026. We'd like to add another vet tech to increase the number of animals spayed and neutered. We'd like to add more animal control, which would entail another vehicle as well. And we would like to increase good pet ownership awareness through education in our community. Nationwide, it is estimated that between 66% and 71% of homes have pets. More rural areas like ours are estimated to be even higher in that percentage. So as you guys know, and I hear you all talk about regularly, Sedalia is growing. We need a path forward to be able to meet the needs of all these new people moving in and the pets that they're bringing with them. So to do that, I'd like to address the problems that we currently have. Currently, I need more animal control. You see it on Facebook. You guys get the phone calls, dogs running at large. I get the phone calls from you guys. My neighbor's dogs are loose. They're chasing the mailman. My animal control officer currently puts in between 40 and 56 hours a week. That would be better if my other part-time animal control officer position didn't roll over as frequently. But regardless, he's been on call nonstop for three months straight. He's had no week off, no weekend off where he was not on call. We need to provide enough ACO officers and hours to meet our community's demands. The amount of animal control calls calling or coming in each year is increasing, but the amount of employees to handle them is the same. And this is burning out my good employee, and it's a disservice to our citizens. So you can see on this chart that I've got up here, between '23 and '24, there was 1,023 calls. Between '24 and '25, there's 1,208. That's an 18% increase. And then just from April 1st to current, that's already 842 calls, which is a 19.49% increase. So the need is increasing, and I'd like to rise to meet that need. Oh, I skipped a slide. I'd like to address another problem by one of the roots. Unaltered animals running at large create more unaltered animals running at large. One of the main reasons that our animals are out running at large is because they're trying to procreate, and that's what fills my shelter. We live in a low-cost spay and neuter barren area. Adding an additional vet tech will streamline the surgeries by allowing one tech to prep, the vet to perform the surgery, and one tech to be in charge of the recovery. The successful high-volume spay and neuter clinics credit their success to their factory-aligned style, and that makes each section of the process run smoothly and successfully. More altered animals means fewer animals running at large and less aggressive animals in our community. So the third goal I have for 2026 is to prepare our community's youth. We need to start where the kids are. The kids love the pets. Most of us get pets because our kids love pets. We need to be educating our kids on how to be good pet owners. I'd like to start educational programs and do presentations in youth groups and schools, and talk to these kids about how to be responsible and happy pet owners. And going along with that, we would like to create some pamphlets, some coloring books. I have an incredible board right now, who has been kind of spearheading this. These are some plans that they've come up with, and I think that these are things that will get kids excited about caring for their pets, and then they'll bring these home to discuss it with their parents. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions, counsel? Doesn't look like it. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, guys, for your time.
Our second item on the list tonight is the Sedalia Police Department has completed its testing process and identified three police recruit candidates who must attend the Class A 600-hour Basic Academy at the Central Missouri Police Academy beginning July 26 to become police officers. Tuition for the program is $6,560 per recruit. Like many agencies statewide, the city continues to face challenges in recruiting and retaining qualified police officers, and sending new recruits through the academy is necessary to maintain the staffing levels and support continued public safety operations. To that end, Chief Woolery recommends a budget amendment to increase the Sedalia Police Department training account by $19,680 to cover the full academy cost for the three recruits. Staff recommends approval of this budget amendment.
All right, so we have a resolution and then one bill in relation to this budget amendment. We'll go ahead and start with the resolution first. Call for the reading of Resolution 2154.
Resolution 2154. A resolution at city council of the city of Sedalia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase city's annual budget for fiscal year 2026.
I have a motion to approve Resolution 2154 in a second. Do you have any counsel discussion regarding that resolution? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And we will now call for the reading of Bill number 2025-190.
Bill number 2025-190, an ordinance admitting the budget for the fiscal year 2025, 2026 regarding recruit police academy.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion and second for the second reading of Bill number 2025-190. Do you have any counsel discussion regarding that bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2025-190, an ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year 2025, 2026 regarding recruit police academy.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion and second for the second reading of Bill number 2025-190. Do you have any counsel discussion regarding that bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2025-190, an ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year 2025, 2026 regarding recruit police academy.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and second for the final passage of Bill number 2025-190. Do you have any counsel discussion regarding the final passage of this bill? Having heard none, roll call please.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes, and thank you Chairman Scribner. Up next, we have Public Works. Chairman Franklin, you have the floor.
We have eight items this each. Number one, as you know, the city entered a contract approved by council to develop a comprehensive and modern industrial pretreatment program for our industrial wastewater customers. Following that, we hosted a lunch and learn in July to help educate our industrial users on the purpose of the pretreatment program and to explain how the city would be updating the program at the beginning of the year. As we move forward, Elijah Edge from Drop Collaborative will be providing a formal presentation to the city council outlining the pretreatment program updates, including the updated legal authority, local limits, user fee schedule, and enforcement response plan.
All right, we'll go ahead and give the floor to our representatives here from Drop Collaborative.
Good evening. My name's Brittany. I'm the city pretreatment coordinator. Permits issued for each one of the city's wastewater treatment plants by the Missouri Department of Natural Resources requires the city to have an industrial pretreatment program. This program protects the well-being of our city's wastewater facilities, the staff, the public, and the environment. Over the past year, the city has utilized Drop Collaborative for consulting services to aid in building a better foundation for the program, the ordinance development, enforcement plans, local limit evaluation, and data management. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to work with Drop Collaborative on enhancing the city's pretreatment program. Tonight, Alisa Edge, project manager with Drop Collaborative, is here to share with you the pretreatment program modifications.
Good evening, members of council. I'm Alisa Edge.
Thank you, Brittany.
So as Brittany mentioned, the city of Sedalia implements a pretreatment program that's been approved by the State of Missouri Department of Natural Resources. This program's required by the wastewater treatment permits that are issued to the city, and we've been working to make modifications and suggest updates to the program. So tonight, the council resolution before you is one for endorsing a submittal of the updated program to the Department of Natural Resources for their review and approval. Change slide. Thank you. So let's take a step back and talk about what is a pretreatment program and what the value of it is. So the city operates three wastewater treatment plants, and the treatment plants are alive with microorganisms that are designed to treat human sewage, thinking about waste that comes down from the toilets, from your bathrooms, sinks, kitchen, kitchens, in households. So it's called biological treatment, and it works well for removing conventional pollutants. Think about suspended solids, oil and grease, BOD. But these biological processes are not necessarily compatible with all waste coming from industrial sources. So, for example, metals that could be discharged from metal finishing or metal forming operations can actually be toxic to the bugs at the wastewater treatment plant. And those types of pollutants are actually much better removed through chemical treatments, and that can be done on-site at the industrial facilities to pretreat the water before it comes down to the city. So there's other types of pollutants that are not compatible with your city's wastewater treatment plants. Those would be synthetic chemicals, things like PFOS, and sometimes just very high loads, high concentrations of pollutants coming down at once. So pretreatment is a program that is based on a federal program and implemented through the local, through the city here, approved by the state to prevent disruptions to the pretreatment, to the treatment works, like what's pictured here. Because disruptions like these impact the ability for the city to comply with its own permits to the state, increases the cost of treatment, and it can be harmful to people and to the environment. Next slide, please. So there was enforcement action brought by the state in 2024 that spurred the city to review and evaluate the pretreatment program. Findings were that updates were needed, and that's why it's an agenda item here tonight. So we recommended updating the program components, including the legal authority, which is your city code. And that gives the authority here locally to be able to implement your program and comply with state and federal regulations. Additionally, the enforcement response plan is recommended to be updated to align with the new code as well. And so the enforcement response plan sets guidance for how the city will respond to instances of noncompliance and violations with the program. So it establishes consistency in the responses across users, and it outlines levels of escalation as enforcement based on recurrence and severity of violations. Additionally, we're recommending updates to local limits and updated or incorporating cost recovery in your program. So the ERP escalation schedule here that's in front of you shows the enforcement mechanisms and a fine range associated with violations that correspond with a numeric action level. So this here shows that as enforcement action or as severity and recurrence increase, the enforcement action also increases in severity, from things like informal communications to notices of violation, all the way to consent orders, compliance orders, and the enforcement, administrative enforcement actions escalate from there, also corresponding to the fine range. That's recommended, and the city personnel who are involved at different tiers of enforcement. The enforcement, the ERP, is actually a required component of the pretreatment program by the state and federal regs. There you go, head and next slide. Thank you. Oh, actually, go back one second. So what you see here is fine range that goes all the way up from zero to $1,000. $1,000 is actually the minimum allowable maximum limit by EPA. So, yes, so this is, as the action levels and as the enforcement increases, the fine range that is suggested also increases, but not to exceed $1,000 per violation per day. So the program updates also include new local limits. The Department of Natural Resources earlier this year put out a letter requiring the city to reevaluate their local limits to make sure that they are protective enough of the wastewater treatment plants in the city. So we evaluated the local limit or the wastewater at all three plants and recommend adopting limits for the north and central plants, which do have industrial contributors. So if you think about it, like, there's a pie chart here. If you think about all the load that a wastewater treatment plant can handle is like the entire pie. And then a big portion, we go pollutant by pollutant and do the analysis, but think about how much is taken up by your everyday households, the domestic loads coming from households and businesses in the community. So that's, that portion is allocated. And then evaluate how much then is left over for industrial users, also factoring in a safety margin. So then that portion that is available for industrial users gets divvied out to all the industries that are permitted in the community. So the goal would be then to allocate, give industries the allocation that they need while also being protective of the wastewater So this program requires resources. Currently, the city is not, does not issue any additional costs or fees to its industrial users that are participating in part of the pretreatment program. But the ongoing responsibilities of the city include identifying and permitting industrial users that pose risk to the treatment plant, sampling, and inspecting permitted and limits for the north and central plants, which do have industrial contributors. So if you think about it, like, there's a pie chart here. If you think about all the load that a wastewater treatment plant can handle, it's like the entire pie. And then a big portion, we go pollutant by pollutant and do the analysis, but think about how much is taken up by your everyday households, the domestic loads coming from households and businesses in the community. So that's, that portion is allocated. And then evaluate how much then is left over for industrial users, also factoring in a safety margin. So then that portion that is available for industrial users gets divvied out to all the industries that are permitted in the community. So the goal would be then to allocate, give industries the allocation that they need while also being protective of the wastewater plant. So this program requires resources. Currently, the city is not, does not issue any additional costs or fees to its industrial users that are participating in part of the pretreatment program. But the ongoing responsibilities of the city include identifying and permitting industrial users that pose risk to the treatment plant, sampling and inspecting permitted industries annually, reviewing user reports, enforcing on noncompliance, and meeting with industries that are in noncompliance to determine what's the best path forward to come back into compliance and working with them. Additionally, the city must report to the state annually and also monitor its own wastewater treatment plant, discharges, and biosolids. So all of these components do cost resources from the city. So currently, the city is losing money through this program, and so the question is, who shares the cost? And it's, is it fair to, you know, I would say it's not really fair to put that burden on your industrial, on your residential users and residential customers. The idea being that this program, because I know currently the city is not issuing fees for the industrial users in the program, which you have five currently, and we've identified an additional four industries that need to be permitted by the city, phasing in over a three-year period what these fees look like. So just so nobody's hit with a big cost right away, but being able to phase that in over a three-year period. This would include an annual fee for permitted industries to cover the costs of annual inspections and sampling events, which actually are quite expensive. Additionally, a waste hauler fee, which would be for waste haulers that truck in waste from non-city connections, the ability for the city to recover costs responding to instances of noncompliance and investigating those, costs for issuing permits, and for accepting high-strength discharges. So we believe that the updates, the updated program is going to approve, improve the city's ability to implement their pretreatment program and protect the wastewater treatment plants. So we're requesting that you endorse the submission to Missouri Department of Natural Resources for review. What this process looks like is additionally, an endorsement to submit to DNR for review. At that point, it goes on public notice at the state level and locally for 30 days. Incorporate any comments and feedback and recommendations from the state, and then it would be presented to council again for adoption after modifications, if any, had been incorporated. So, kind of in closing, industries are an important piece of the fabric of Sedalia, and it's, they're an important part of the community. And we think that this program update is intended to support the city's ability to accept industrial waste discharges while also protecting the sewer's treatment system as required by its permits. Communication lays the groundwork for good relationships and good working relationships, and I think as it was read earlier, this summer, Brittany, in collaboration with us, hosted a lunch and learn here for all the industrial users, and we had a really great turnout. Hopefully it was, you know, we had good feedback from those that attended in setting the scene for better understanding what the program requires, both from the industrial players and from the city. So we would hope to just continue that good communication between the industrial users and the city, too. And, you know, I, the goal being that with these program updates, the program is going to better match the wastewater treatment capacity of the city, and also the industrial permits that are issued through this program will better reflect each individual industry and what their contributions are to. So thank you so much for your attention, and what questions do you have?
Does counsel have any questions for the representative from Drop Collaborative?
I have one question. In your proposal here, you mentioned annual samples. Who would collect and evaluate those samples in this proposal?
So permitted industrial users are required to, through their permits, sample at least twice a year and report to the city, but also the city's responsible for independently verifying the discharges of each of their permitted industrial users. So both the city and the industry collect samples annually.
Okay.
So we present this program to DNR, the state?
Yes.
And they say yes or no, and it comes back to us? Then what further input do you get from local industries?
So the public notice that's going on at the, will be going on at the state level, will also be going on locally. And so I think the goal would be that, to give all the industrial users an update after this meeting as to where we are in the process of the program updates, and give them an opportunity to weigh in as well. And then, so industrial users also, most of their permits are expiring here at the end of the year, and so we're in the process of developing new user permits, and so there'll be additional communications through the issuance process of those permits.
So then the council review it again also before it's adopted?
Yes, it would come before council, before it's adopted.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Anyone else? Looks like nothing further, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
In conjunction with this, we'll go ahead and call for the reading of Resolution 2155.
Resolution 2155, a resolution of the city council of City Sedalia, Missouri, to update the city sewer use code to reflect pretreatment program requirements pursuant to the code of federal regulations, and to submit these program modifications to the Missouri Department of Natural Resources for approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second of Resolution 2155. Any council discussion regarding that resolution that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
The second item, Public Works Department is requesting approval to move forward with the Katy Depot Liberty Park Connect Sedalia Project. When the grant was awarded in 2023, the scope covered construction only, and design engineering and the required cultural study were not included in the original project cost. After securing a one-year extension to complete design, the city contracted with Wilson and Company for plans, specification, and cultural study. As part of that work, the city received a $10,000 grant from Pettis County Health Center to help offset the cultural study costs. Bids for construction were opened September 24, 2025, with Rad Baker Construction LLC submitting the low bid of $1,10679, including design and cultural study expenses. The total project cost is $1,312,327.60, resulting in a needed budget amendment of $315,000 to fully fund the project. Staff recommends approval of the budget amendment and the award of the construction contract to Rad A Baker Construction LLC.
All right, as this is a budget amendment, we have one resolution and two bills in conjunction with it. We'll go ahead and call for the reading of Resolution 2156 first.
Resolution 2156, resolution of the city council of City Sedalia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase city's annual budget for fiscal year 2026.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second on Resolution 2156. Do I have any council discussion regarding that resolution? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. We will now call for the reading of Bill number 2025-191.
Bill number 2025-191, an ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year 2025-2026 regarding trail construction from Katy Depot to Liberty Park.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion in second for the second reading of Bill number 2025-191. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2025-191, an ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year 2025-2026 regarding trail construction from Katy Depot to Liberty Park.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion in second for the final passage of Bill number 2025-191. Do I have any council discussion regarding that bill? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yeah.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. We will now call for the reading of Bill number 2025-192.
Bill number 2025-192, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for the Katy Depot Liberty Park Connect Sedalia Project.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion in second for the second reading of Bill number 2025-192. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2025-192, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for the Katy Depot Liberty Park Connect Sedalia Project.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion in second for the final passage of Bill number 2025-192. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes.
I think. The third item, city staff is requesting approval of task order number three with HDR Engineering Incorporated for construction inspection services associated with the Washington Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation Project. Following the discovery of significant deterioration in the original steel support columns during the MoDOT inspection, HDR conducted a condition assessment and subsequently developed plans and specification for bridge repairs to restore two-way traffic with a minimum load rating of 35 tons. Construction was bid and awarded to Double Arch Construction LLC in October 17, 2025. Because the city does not have in-house personnel qualified to perform specialized inspection work required for this project, HDR has provided proposal totaling $278,658 with project administration, design services during construction, onsite inspection, and final load rating review. This work is part of the overall 1.2 million project budget, of which $1,084,935 has been spent or approved to date. Staff recommends approval of task order number three with HDR Engineering to ensure proper inspection and compliance throughout the construction project.
All right, we'll call for the reading of Bill number 2025-193.
Bill number 2025-193, an ordinance approving and accepting task order number three for construction inspection services for the Washington Street Bridge Repair.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion in second for the second reading of Bill number 2025-193. Do I have any council discussion regarding that bill?
Yes, could staff comment on when this will happen?
Direct that point of information to administrative work on the commencement of construction.
The actual construction or the inspection? Because the inspection will occur throughout the construction.
Well, I mean, when is this going to start?
They are starting to mobilize this week, so we hope that work will begin in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
But with weather and those types of things, please be patient as we get it done as quick as we can. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
We still have set a finalization of March 1st.
Yes, the final end date is still the same and still carries basically a penalty if it's not done on time.
Yes.
That hasn't changed.
Any other discussion regarding Bill number 2025-193 on the second reading? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2025-193, an ordinance approving and accepting task order number three for construction inspection services for the Washington Street Bridge Repair.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion in second for the final passage of Bill number 2025-193. Do I have any council discussion regarding that bill? All right, having heard none, roll call, please.
Hiller?
Yeah.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes.
Next, the Sedalian Lions Club has submitted a request for permissive use of right-of-way permit to install a sign located approximately 480 feet west of Oak Road West right-of-way line and 130 feet north of 100 Curry Drive. Council recently adopted permissive use ordinance establishing the criteria and process evaluating such request. In accordance with the ordinance, the Lions Club submitted a completion application, and city staff conducted review to ensure compliance with all requirements. The application meets established criteria. Staff has found no reason to deny the request. Public Works Department recommends approval for Sedalia Lion Club permissive use right-of-way.
All right, we'll call for the reading of Bill number 2025-194.
Bill number 2025-194, an ordinance granting a permissive use and right-of-way permit to Sedalia Lions Club for installation of sign.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion in second for the second reading of Bill number 2025-194. Do I have any council discussion regarding that bill that's on the floor?
Is there a fee on that as far as a permit that they have to get?
I'll direct that point of information to administrative work.
No, there's not.
Okay, because I was going to waive it, see if we could waive it if it was.
Any other council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2025-194, an ordinance granting a permissive use of right-of-way permit to Sedalia Lions Club for installation of a sign.
Second.
I have a motion in second for the final passage of Bill number 2025-194. Do I have any council discussion regarding that bill?
Do we have a date of installation for this?
We'll direct that to administrative work.
No, we don't have anything of yet. I don't, I think they were waiting to see if we had a, had it approved. There are representatives from the Lions Club here tonight if you wanted to direct any questions to them.
Maybe I'll go ahead and invite up Mr. Wineman to go ahead and take that question. He's from the Lions Club.
Thank you all. No, we were waiting for this to pass the resolution, so now that it looks like it's going to, then we will ask the contractor to start, and they said it would be eight to 10 weeks before it's finished. So this is privately funded by the 12 different clubs that are going to be on that sign, and so we're going to get the money sent to the contractor, and so somewhere around February is when it should be done, whether permitting, it's going to get installed in or not. But so that's where we're at. So in early springtime, we should be able to have this erected.
Very good. Any other questions from the, for the representative from Lions Club? Thank you. And we'll move on with a roll call vote.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
All in favor?
Next, a citizen submitted a request to Sedalia Traffic Advisory Commission asking that the posted speed limit throughout the Southwest Village be reduced from 25 miles per hour to 20 miles per hour. The Traffic Advisory Commission reviewed the request at the recent meeting, and following discussion unanimously voted to deny the request and recommend the speed limit reduction to city council. As required, the item now moves to city council for final consideration and action.
All right, call for the reading of Bill number 2025-195.
Bill number 2025-195, an ordinance authorizing a reduced speed limit in Southwest Village from 25 miles an hour to 20 miles an hour.
Do I have a motion in second for a second reading? If not, this bill dies. I do not?
Next, a citizen submitted a request to Sedalia Traffic Advisory Commission for the installation of a two-way stop at the intersection of Highland Avenue and Wing Avenue. The commission reviewed the request at the recent meeting and after discussion unanimously voted to deny the request and not recommend the placement of a two-way stop at that location. In accordance with established procedures, the request now moves to the council for final consideration and action.
I'll call for the reading of Bill number 2025-196.
Bill number 2025-196, an ordinance establishing a two-way stop sign at the intersection of Highland Avenue and Wing Avenue.
All right, do I have a motion in second for the second reading of this bill? Not having one, this bill dies on the floor.
Next, a citizen submitted a request to Sedalia Traffic Advisory Commission for the installation of a two-way stop at the intersection of Southwest Boulevard and Wing Avenue. The commission reviewed the request at the recent meeting and after discussion unanimously voted to deny the request and not recommend placement of a two-way stop at that location. In accordance with established procedure, the request now moves to city council for final consideration and action.
I will call for the reading of Bill number 2025-197.
Bill number 2025-19- Bill Number 2025-197, an ordinance establishing a two-way stop sign at the intersection of Southwest Boulevard and Wing Avenue.
And do I have a motion in second for second reading? Having heard none, this bill dies on the floor as well?
And final one is, a citizen submitted a request for the Sedalia Traffic Advisory Commission for the installation of a yield sign on Skyline Drive. The commission reviewed the request at the recent meeting and after discussion unanimously voted to deny the request and not recommend placement of a yield sign at that location. In accordance with established procedure, the request now moves to City Council for final consideration and action.
All right, we'll call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-198.
Bill Number 2025-198, an ordinance establishing a yield sign on Skyline Drive.
All right, do I have a motion in second for second reading? I mean, heard none, this bill dies on the floor as well. And that concludes our public works. Thank you, Chairwoman Franklin. Moving along to miscellaneous items from the city council or city administrator, does anybody have anything?
I would just like to take this opportunity, staff, thank you so very much for opening up Main Street. It's very much appreciated.
Anyone else? Having heard none, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item, which is the Good and Welfare portion of meeting, the meeting. This is a time we've set aside for residents of Sedalia to address the city council directly. As a reminder, anyone wishing to speak must have signed up in advance using the form located in the lobby prior to the start of the meeting. That form requires your name, address, telephone number and agenda item you wish to address. Comments must relate to items on tonight's agenda unless a formal written request to speak on a non-agenda topic was submitted at least two business days in advance. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to present their remarks. Please clearly state your name and address for the record when you come to the microphone. This is not a time for debate or dialogue with council members. The council chambers is a limited public forum, and all remarks must be directed to the council as a whole. I would remind everyone that personal attacks on specific city employees by name or title are not permitted. If you wish to file a formal complaint regarding an employee, you may do so in writing through the clerk's office. Disrupted behavior such as shouting, refusing to yield the floor or blocking view of others will not be tolerated, and violators may be asked to leave or removed by law enforcement if necessary. Your comments tonight will be recorded as a part of the official public record. We thank you for your cooperation in maintaining decorum. At this time, we'll go ahead and begin calling up the speakers, and Clerk Myers, if you could go ahead and do that.
I only have one individual tonight on a non-agenda item, Kevin Walker, and he wants to talk about a tree that was cut down and replaced, so.
Come on up.
My name is Kevin Walker, 700 West Broadway, here in Sedalia. Good evening, Mayor and City Council and the citizens of Sedalia. I needed to come to here today and share the situation that happened on my property on Thursday, November 6th. I'd come home from work to discover that my rosebud had been cut down by the city as they were trimming trees along Broadway. I made contact, and not in a very nice way, and I asked who was in charge of deciding what trees stay and what tree goes. And Justin Bray said it was he that was in charge and decided. And I said, how does a street and alley person all of a sudden be an arbanist? Mr. Bray started lying to me about the tree. He said it was overhanging the sidewalk, which was a bald-faced lie. And then he proceeded to tell me that it was blocking the view of traffic from Harrison, another lie, because I kept that tree trimmed. And I called him out on both of those. Thanks to Calvin Shaw, I have learned to document, document and document my property. I had photos that I shared online and with Mayor Dawson. From the photos, you could see in cars from my Ring camera that was shooting down towards the highway. There was also a photo of me standing near the tree showing that the obstruction was not happening on Harrison. So unfortunately, Mr. Bray represented Sedalia started off with a lie by telling me, telling me lies on that. But Mayor Dawson contacted me pretty quickly and asked me, what can we do to fix this? I said, I want my tree back. It had been there for over 22-plus years, and so Andrew checked in and called back and asked if I could, if we could put the tree in my yard. I thought for a moment on that, and I compromised on allowing this, and Andrew told me Justin would be back. So I stood outside and waited for Justin to come back to the house, and he introduced himself. I said, I know who you are? He apologized for the tree and then asked me where I would like the new one. I decided on the east side of the house in the front yard. He said he would take care of getting the utilities to mark their locations, and he said if they were not able to get the work order on Monday, they would be there on Wednesday, because they don't work on Veterans Day. So Andrew, Mayor Dawson and Shawna Jaeger, Landscape Supervisor of the Sedalia Parks Department, along with an assistant, came to dig the hole. They dug the hole, set the tree in, and all of us pushed the dirt onto the tree. And I was very, I was at ease with Shawna helping plant that tree, because she has more experience than Justin Bray on how to trim and take care of trees. She also informed me that there was enough work for two tree trimmers in this town, one working the bucket and the other loading in the truck. They would be busy all year long, and you wouldn't have to pull street and alleys to take care of the trees. Because unfortunately, they butchered Broadway on the north side of the road. And these are people that are not arbanists, they were street and alley. We are known for our beautiful trees on Broadway, but no more. One site has been butchered while the street and alley person has cost you money and time on replacing trees. I hope this won't happen, hope this won't keep us from getting that award. Mayor Dawson, I thank you very much for the tree. It's a wonderful addition to my yard, and it's going to be beautiful in many years to come. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Oh, can we get your address for the record? Sorry about that.
Sorry, I didn't say. 700 West Broadway.
Perfect, and you may have, I just something to miss that. All right, next?
That was it, Mayor.
Okay, very good. With that, I will go ahead and entertain a motion in a second to move to close session.
Motion to move to close second, or to move to close session for subsections 1, 2, 3, and 12.
We don't have a motion to move to close session. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Roll call, please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. All right, do I have a motion in second to return to the regular open meeting?
Motion to return?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yeah.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross? Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
All right, and that leads us to a motion in second to adjourn the meeting. Some move?
Second.
A motion in second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, thank you. Have a great night, everybody.